It's a work session, we'll dispense with our normal and go straight into the session. Turn it over to our seat manager.
Thank you. I have a few brief comments before we get started, but, you know, we start this process internally in January, so it's always kinda, I think it's fun to get to this part because it means we have a product to show you, and the department heads worked really hard, working on their budgets, but, you know, kinda wanted to remind everybody what the city's mission is, and, you know, the mission statement is, well, that's Darrell's, but Darrell's mission statement looks pretty good, too, so it should tie into the city's nicely. But anyway, you know, our mission is to provide city services that enhance the livability of the community. And so, as we go through this tonight and tomorrow, I think you will see what the department heads are putting forth enhances that livability, and, you know, those are two easy words to, you know, hold on to and remember as we're going through it. There's no need to remind you, we're in a growing economy. The cost of doing business is going up, so you all experience, I know we do, in our personal lives, what it costs us in your business lives, you know it's going up. The priorities for putting a budget together, in addition to maintaining the current services we're offering today, was a pay program for our employees and a street maintenance program. So, the street maintenance program does include the street sweeping program that we, hopefully you will embrace, so we can do a much better job in that area. It's a maintenance budget, there's not a whole lot of growth in it for most of our departments. You will see that when they present tonight and tomorrow. I always keep in mind, as does Gilbert, we work really hard to understand that we have services we have to provide, but we also have to keep in mind that tax rate, because we know our citizens want something that's acceptable. So, keep that in mind as we're going through. The other thing you will see, and I know Cheryl's gonna talk about it a little bit when she gets to her presentation, and some of the departments will, we're constantly looking at ways to streamline our operations, to reduce costs where we can, and use technology. You know, technology is expensive, but it helps us work smarter, so you will notice that when these department heads talk about their budgets. The goal after tomorrow is to kinda see if y'all are okay with the concepts we're presenting and the direction we're going. You're getting it first, you haven't seen it, you're seeing it for the first time tonight, but hopefully after tomorrow, you'll kinda, we'll start to, you know, formulate around, yeah, that makes sense, or no, it doesn't make sense. So, that's kinda how, what I wanna say on that concept. The plan is that we're gonna talk, the enterprise funds are gonna talk tonight, you've got Darrell's gonna go over environmental services, and Lynn's gonna talk about public works. Lynn's last presentation kinda transitions us into the general fund, which is the street department, and then if we have time, I've committed to two hours tonight, Jared will talk about development services, and then we'll go from there. Tomorrow, when we start back at 1:00, we'll be into the general fund library, we have Colby. If I have time tonight, Colby will do his, but I'm not sure if I will or not, but then we'll do police and fire. We'll end the day tomorrow, probably starting around 3:00, with Gilbert talking about finances, revenues, expenses, tax rates, and then Cheryl will talk about our pay programs. That's how we'll end up over the next day and half. These are our big budgets, big department budgets, and then in August, we'll come back with that budget document. That big, thick document is Mr. Alvarez always asks about. We'll bring that back in August, so there'll be no more planned work sessions for, you know, the rest of June or July, it'd be just normal meetings, so there's no additional meetings that are planned for the budget until we get into August. Darrell, are you ready to kick us off? And Darrell starts off with very good news.
You did, real quick, you said tomorrow we'll start at 3:00.
I'm sorry, 1:00.
You meant the final presentation.
Yeah, we'll start at 1:00, but Gilbert, around 3:00, we'll start on the finances, which gives us almost two hours to really go through the financial component.
I just wanna make sure everyone understood.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Good evening, Marin Council. I do have some good news, as Charmel alluded to. Environmental Services is looking at no rate increase this year for any of our services that we provide. That includes brush, bulky, solid waste, all of those fees will remain the same next year as what they are this year. So, with that, our mission statement is Environmental Services is dedicated to delivering quality services to residents that improve the beauty and livability of Victoria. And that is kinda tailored to go along with what the city's mission statement is. There we go. Just a little brief overview about our departments. At the Environmental Administration Office, we have four individuals, including myself. We take care of the air quality, environmental education, household hazardous waste, the landfill contract, the landfill gas contract, and the compost site contract as well. At Fleet, we have three employees. We have a manager there, plus two employees, and one of those handles communications. And at Solid Waste, we have 20 employees. We have the administrative staff, and then, of course, the collection, the drivers for solid waste, yard waste, brush and bulky, and the recycling programs. The next slide here really shows you where we've gone since 2012. It really shows the impact that recycling's had. If you look, just at, looking down the variance line, on solid waste, and that's in tons, we dropped 717 tons from April of 2012 to April of 2013. 717 tons at 3130 a ton is what we pay. Those tons that moved to recycling, 366 tons, our recycling cost is $24 a ton. That's a savings for the city, not only a savings in the fact that we're not putting it in the landfill, but it's also a financial savings for the city on disposal. Looking at the brush and yard waste, it's 366 tons. Household hazardous waste has dropped off from 60 tons, 65 tons to 60 tons, but we've got a maturing program now. We've been doing this, we're on our third year. We had a big influx of people getting rid of mostly e-waste the first year or two, and now that's kinda come back. It's a TV here, computer here, computer there, but those big, those people that had several things they needed to get rid of, they've gotten rid of, and we're kinda leveling out now, so that's kinda to be expected. An interesting number, though, is when we start looking at total homes, and this is an April-to-April number, 132 homes. So, we've added 132 homes to our routes in a year. Adding that, we've got 41 additional carts in the past year that we've added as well. So, when I talk about the 132 homes, those could be rentals that were previously vacant, or they could be new homes that were built, those type of situations.
Can we ask a question?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Darrell, those carts, are those commercial carts, or are those residential?
Those are all residential. We have, the city does no commercial pickup at all.
Okay. So, those are the ones that we pay for, the extra ones, the yellow ones in the recycle?
Yes, ma'am, we've got, no, now, these are the, these are garbage carts strictly. I do not have recycle carts figured into this number. This is strictly garbage carts.
Or just the garbage. Okay, so that includes, if somebody has one and they wanna add another one?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's not necessarily a new customer, it's just that they added extra carts?
That is that last line there that has the 41, those are additional carts. So, as of April, we had 3,969 out on the street, almost 4,000. A fifth of the city has an extra cart. An overview of our budget. So, as we get in, we have, these are our operating funds, the administration department, yard waste, recycling, brush and bulky, and the solid waste collection. This graph just kinda shows where the money lies. About 2.2 million makes up the solid waste budget. Then you've got yard waste, brush and bulky administration, recycling and communication, they all make up smaller portions of that budget. Fleet budget is not in here. Fleet is a number that's a very liquid number, it changes this early in the game, and I'll get to that in a minute, the fleet number, but it may change quite a bit before we get to a finalized budget, whereas these numbers won't change usually a whole lot. So, the first department we're gonna look at is the administration department. Personnel and services, we have an increase of about $8,100. That encompasses the PFP, and pretty much, that's about it. As you look down through the lines, you can see that pretty much everything else has gone down, and so, year over year, we're looking at a difference of about $6,800 for this year's budget as opposed to last year's. Yard waste collection, we have a, we've gone down about $9,800. Two things play into that. One is, last year, we purchased some GPSs, and we're starting to see how those things are affecting the way we do business, and it has been a positive pretty much across all lines of business. So, it's, I'm happy to be able to say that, yes.
Darrell, when did you get those installed?
We actually did not start operating on those till April, but we've already seen enough of a kick that it's, we believe it's gonna make a good difference. Materials and supplies, we've gone up about $6,200 there. As I split these things out and did them, some of these encompass fuel, as I get to the bigger departments like recycling and solid waste, they do not, so that fuel makes up part of that $6,800. Internal services, that's kinda, I think Gilbert's gonna talk about that tomorrow and kinda explain how that works, but that's all the charges we get internally, whether it be from IT, finance, fleet, different charges. And then, contract labor, we think we're gonna be able to reduce contract labor by about six grand. So, year over year, our total expenditure is gonna be about $5,500 over last year's Everybody remembers when we started recycling, we were expecting about a 40% participation rate, we've been averaging close to 70. Now, we've seen that drop off the last couple of months, we're down kinda in the mid-60s now. You saw in an earlier slide how we increased quite a bit the tonnage that we were picking up in recycling. However, we were also sending a lot of help on that route from other trucks, because we exceeded the 40% that we thought we were originally gonna have. So, we believe that, one, with the GPS, and, two, with the decrease in the percentage of usage, we're gonna be able to bring that number down about 10.5. Most of that is gonna be in overtime, and it's overtime that's actually done by other trucks helping on that route. As you go down, you can see there's, everything else pretty much went down, so at the end, the total expenditure is about $3,500 less year over year. This brings us to bulky waste. Again, personnel services, we believe we're gonna be able to drop off about $3,900. A little bit different scenario here, part of that is gonna be GPS, part of it is gonna be the new ordinance that we passed. Y'all will remember, last year in November, we passed ordinance about brush and bulky being left out at the street. We've seen a huge influx of that this spring. We think that as that levels out towards the end of the year and going into next year, people understand what the rules are, we really think that a lot of that business will level out and kind of disappear, because people will get it done immediately and not wait six months down the road. As we go down, we look at, of course, internal services, but also tipping fees is down, or, I'm sorry, is up about seven grand. Hopefully, we'll keep an eye on that and be able to work with that. If we see the business go down, of course, the tipping fees will go down as well.
What are the tipping fees?
The tipping fees for brush and...
What is that?
That's when we, what we pay when we go into the compost facility or the landfill.
It usually ends up with the Golden Crescent pick, right?
Yes.
That's how they, in the state?
A portion of that goes back to the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Convention.
Right.
Moving on to solid waste. This is the big one. Now, remember I prefaced earlier that solid waste pays a lot of the bills for bulky waste, yard waste, and those other departments, 'cause they all office out of the same building, and since the majority of our budget is solid waste pickup, they carry the bulk of the bills. Personnel and services, we're up about $9,600, and of course, that's mostly PFP. Materials and supplies, we're up about $13,000. As you, as we look at that, we've had some increases in safety equipment, print shop fees, but as we look at this, the solid waste department has a truck wash facility or vehicle wash facility, and we support pretty much the whole city with that. Any department that needs to use it, I believe police and fire do their own, but public, it's open to public works, parks, anyone else, but we pick up the fee for that, goes out of our department. And then, maintenance. One thing in maintenance is that that maintenance number also includes a building development improvement number, and we're looking at installing, if you've ever been to the solid waste office, we have one driveway in, it's very narrow, you can't get a car and a truck in, if you've got one waiting, they have to wait. We wanna put another driveway so that it's kind of a U shape, you can get in and out through various entrances. Again, no rate increase. I wanna make sure everybody understands that.
Darrell?
Yes, sir.
If I may ask a question. So, looking back on each of the other items, the internal service charge?
Yes, sir.
So, you increased that, where does that go, again?
That goes to various departments. It may go to IT.
It depends on the, IT is probably the largest, it depends on the fund, IT purchasing.
Fleet.
Fleet, yeah, it's those internal services for the, yeah.
Repairs, different things.
And you're not charging these other guys to come use your car wash?
No.
And the thing, too, finance always looks every year at internal service to make sure it's matched up.
How much you charging, Gilbert? Too much.
I'm sorry?
I was just, well, I was thinking it was something that you swept into, like the general fund fees, but that's not it, I'm sorry, I should've known.
Yeah, and the departments have no control over those internal service funds.
We're not gonna talk about those tonight?
Internal service?
Yeah.
Do you have a specific one you wanna talk about? You're talking about purchasing?
Well, I was just looking at, as a percentage, they're going up 25%, so I'm kinda curious on why.
Most of it's gonna be reallocation of IT, the IT service, internal service funds have not been reallocated for several years, so finance went back, looked at what departments had what computers and what services and got them reallocated. So, I don't believe IT's budget probably changed a whole lot, it's just a matter of reallocating it among the departments correctly.
That's correct. Basically, councilman, let's take IT department. IT charges overall, if you take all the funds, add them all together, they're flat, and now it went down a little bit. However, there are some departments that went up. One, for example, is our fleet service. Our contract cost, when the increase in the contract, once the increase comes up, that's spread across from our departments and usage. The other fund that took an increase was the communication department. The overhead and operating costs of that department did go up on that area. We can go in a little further tomorrow if you want to, but that one, there was a change in methodology, how we allocate our communication radio system, the one we bought eight, nine years ago for about $6,000, $7,000. There's a maintenance charge to that system, usually in the past, fire department and PD paid to direct maintenance on that. And after Andrea looked into it, there's a lot of other departments use that system, so it was reallocated, spread out to other departments who never had that charge before. PD and fire picked it up, so it kinda reduced the cost on the general fund and spread it out to more to the enterprise funds and other funds that can handle those charges.
You're trying to true it up, you're trying to true up and make sure that who's using it.
Correct. Safety department went up, mainly because of overhead costs. Let's see, those are your main drivers. As you recall, if you're not, those funds do not generate any income as fees, nothing. The only fee that gets that, they receive is from the services fee they charge to other departments, which is the cost. And the reason why we have these internal services is more of a centralized, to see what the cost overall is for the operation itself. Some cities incorporate all these costs in each one, and you don't have these, so in other words, if you won't have a IT department, each department have their own IT department, so you have all those costs across. I think it's more beneficial, you have internal service, because it's easier, one, to, it gives you more flexibility on the cost allocation, especially when you're dealing with the tax rate, as Ms. Garrett said, we'd like to be very sensitive towards that. So, I don't know what else to add on, but, you know, if we don't address any particular fund, we can, I'd be happy to give you the line line, and we can go through which particular fund you wanna look at later.
Okay, thank you.
Your capital, you're showing a zero for next year?
Yes, sir.
I guess, didn't we budget some new arms this year?
Yes, sir, and they've, all but one have been replaced. I believe that truck left yesterday to get that final arm.
I'm sorry, Darrell, I left the key point, I'm sorry, Mr. Bucknutt. The other part that's charged out are from the other departments, when they buy vehicles, it's classified as a turn charge, 'cause money is sent to the VES fund where it's centralized purchases. And once you get the budget, you're gonna see that has dropped overall. So, the key point is, if you add up all the internal charges, no matter what fund, it's gonna go down overall. But if you look at each one, the key point would be the communication, the VES, and safety. But the key one, I wanna make sure you, those purchases and the big purchase like that, also consider charges.
Okay. Mr. Alvarez brought up a good point, I wanna go back to that slide. Last year, we did, we're recognizing that our tipping fees are coming in less this year thus far, so we did reduce tipping fees. And that big number, 573,000, which really helps, is, last year, we had purchased two trucks. We purchased an automated truck and a rearload truck. This year, we're not purchasing any equipment, so that puts us at about 639,000 ahead of last year's budget. Mainly, those are the two big drivers right there.
Yeah, and thank you, Darrell, that's a good example right now. Darrell classifies a capital, but it's really internal charge, so.
Gil, do we have a, we bought an awful lot of automated trucks at one time.
I'm actually gonna get to that.
I'll let you then.
Yeah, it won't be zero every year.
No, it won't. So, again, no rate increase, and that brings us to the closure. Everybody remembers I was in here about two months ago, talking about the closure project? We bid that out, we have the bids in, they did come in under budget. I'll be bringing that to you on June 17th for approval, and so, looking at our post-closure closure fund, for 2013, 14, we start out at about 4.9. We're figuring about 3.02 for the construction cost of that new cell, of the cap, about 298.8 in revenue, which leaves us at about 2.2. We'll start the year 2014, 15 with 2.2. There is a fence that needs to be repaired at an old solid waste facility on Southwest Ben Jordan, so it's gonna cost us about $11,000, but we've had some issues with the public getting in there that we need to keep them out. About 473.8 in revenue, so at the end of 14, 15, we should be left with about 2.68 million in the closure fund. Any questions on the closure fund? Fleet purchases, this is what I kinda talked about earlier, and this is kind of a history of where we've gone over the last several years. 2012, 2013, we had about $4 million worth of vehicles requested. Approved or adopted in the budget was about 2.4, so a difference of about 1.6. 13, 14, 4.2 million, adopted was 2.5, so about 1.6. This year, the city manager asked all the directors to take a long, hard look before we put any vehicles in there, and we did. So, we brought back a original budget of about 2.4, which is actually less than the adopted budget last year, and that, so far, has been cut to 1.5, or a variance of about $859,000 already cut. I don't think there's much more I can say about that.
It doesn't mean they don't need to be replaced, it just means we're making some decisions on, can we go another year, you know? So, eventually, they will all get replaced.
At some point, they're gonna have to, yes, ma'am.
And what, just the fleet, these are what, garbage trucks for next year?
No, sir, this is our entire city fleet. 262 vehicles.
Yeah.
That covers all departments, and that's why I kept it separate, I wanted to make sure everybody, it's a very fluid number, I mean, it could be anywhere from $3 million to zero, as far as that goes, and it usually changes as we go through the budget process.
That could be a tractor, a police car.
It could be, yes, sir, a fire truck, a garbage truck, all the way to just a pickup Which brings, oh, I'm sorry, got one ahead of you. Which brings me to what Councilman Halapaska brought up, future needs. In 2007, late 2007, we purchased seven automated trucks. We have poked and prodded and done everything we can, put new arms on them, and we'll get another year or two out of all of these trucks. We are gonna need to, in future budgets, and the number of four and three can be changed as we go forward, but we're in future budgets, gonna need to start looking at replacing those original seven automated trucks. We're pushing them out, we're adding time and life to those trucks as best we can, but as we start to have more and more breakdowns, we get to a tipping point that, you know, we're losing and we're adding so much labor and time because we're down, that it's just not worth the money not to buy a new truck. The other thing that we're gonna have to start looking at is, at the same time, we started passing out carts. Carts age, lots of different issues that we have with carts. I mean, it can be anything from, you know, we've had a lot of them turned in with broken wheels, you know, it depends on how well the cart's taken care of. We have a lot of calls, people want us to come pick up carts because they stink. We don't usually do that, we walk them through a process to clean them. But we're getting to that point that that life cycle for those carts is starting to come around the corner, and we're looking at around 24,000 carts with the extra carts that we've got out on the street. Now, we've added, you know, those 4,000 extra carts over the last several years, so a lot of those won't need to be replaced. But when you're looking at replacing the original 19,000, almost 20,000 carts, you wanna do it in stages. We, I don't think we wanna spend, you know, $1.4 million to buy carts one year and then have somebody do it. So, in the future budgets, we're gonna have to start looking at, okay, maybe we order 5,000 this year. We'll replace them as people need them, so we don't wanna order them and have 20,000 carts sitting there. But it's something in future budget that is gonna be a large expense. Those carts are about 70 bucks apiece. So, when we start talking about buying 5,000 of them, we're talking about a lot of money. So, it's something, though, that we need to have on the radar as we go forward, because it is gonna start piling up on us over the next two to three years, we believe. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Couple of quick...
Yes, sir.
So, the automated trucks you bought in '07, are you trying to stretch them out for 10 years? Is that what we were hoping, get 10 years out of them?
We actually hope for seven. By adding the new arms, we're trying to get them out to 10.
And the carts, you think are supposed to be good for five years, maybe?
I think we did the carts for 10.
All 10 or two?
Yeah.
Mine are brand new, no.
Well, and there are a lot of them that are that way, it depends on how well you take care of them. Some of it actually boils down to how, you know, if you get a new driver and he's slamming them down, we have to replace some lids. I mean, there's a lot of factors in carts, and, you know, weather, people running over them, backing into them, there's a lot of things that play into carts being replaced.
But I think we've been very pleased with how the carts have, people have treated the carts and how they've been maintained.
And we probably have the sturdiest cart on the market, I would say that.
I was gonna say, y'all did some good purchases, 'cause sometimes you can really damage those things.
But what you wanna do is phase these trucks and the carts in the future, where, you're not doing a lump sum.
That's exactly what we're...
That was my question, 'cause we had to buy seven trucks to get our automated route going, that it's all gonna come due at one time, pretty much.
And unfortunately, that's the way it works, but Gilbert and I have worked on trying to phase them in, you know, we put it in there so that you can see the needs, and we'll work with the trucks as much as we can to try and soften that blow.
Our plan is that in replacing these trucks, it shouldn't affect the rate at all. That was the whole concept when we first started this plan in 2007, where we structured the rates, where we, and, I can give you details, but your rate structure's made up of different components, and part of that component is you replacing the vehicles as well. We should've replaced vehicles there, but, you know, Darrell just did some outstanding gadget things to work on those trucks, and we might as well save the cash. gadget things to work on those trucks, and we might as well save the cash flow and replace them a couple of years down the road. But those, and once you get your budget in August, you're gonna see, we have the working capital to handle those situations, the two years down the road, without affecting the tax rate situation. The other part is, as you recall, we bought some trucks because we had a new system online, the recycling and everything else, so that, you know, we used some of that money to start the program, so now, we're okay in replacing those vehicles down the road without any effect on the rates.
We're really setting good on brush trucks, they've all been replaced, residential trucks, they've all been replaced. So, the next, down the road, really, all we're gonna be focusing on is the automated system. The other trucks, we're gonna be great for a while.
And one point, though, we're not real sure how quickly, but we may end up, if we have, because of our growth in houses, we may at some point have to add another route with another truck and person, but we think we're okay for the next two years at least.
At least, yes, ma'am.
But with that, even with the increase in growth, hopefully, with you got increasing customers, that you don't have that hugely impact on the rates as well. That's the concept.
We've got a magical number that we know, depending on how many houses, that we'll have to add that new route, so.
Yes, ma'am.
We're trying to look around corners.
Okay, I just have one question, because it seems like it comes up later, it doesn't come up now, but there was a time when, is it the contract with the people at Solid Waste that have that built-in 8% that they charge, that affects this rate? And remember, one time, I thought I had asked, and they said, no, it wasn't gonna go up, then they said, yeah, y'all voted on it. But it has to do with the landfill, that 8%, it's built in their contract, and one year they'll charge three, and the next year, they charge 5%.
That's the landfill rate increase, I believe is what you're talking about? They can't charge more than 8% in a two-year period? Am I correct, Gilbert?
I thought it was five.
I think, okay, it may be five.
How does that build into the rates? Because it does affect some.
Oh, it's built into it. The 1375, when you get it, it's built in, has the landfill tipping fee in there, and everything is built into that rate.
It's the tipping fee.
Now, we are charged less than the regular commercial side or the resident, we get a special rate technically on that.
We pay 30. 31.30 is what we pay per ton.
Yeah, the other point I wanted to add is that it varies a lot, there's a big bear blunder, and as Darryl has pointed out in his presentation, tonnage plays a lot. And over the past year, our tonnage has dropped, so you don't have that huge cost. Does that make any sense?
Yes, yes.
If you don't have that cost that year, you have that money that doesn't go anywhere, goes back to the working capital. Next year, somehow, that tonnage goes up, and maybe there's a minor adjustment on the rate, that's how we work it. We try and avoid to come back on the rate side, to come back for, because each year, hopefully, we can manage those things well. But to your question, it does have a direct impact, but it depends on that years of operation. In this case, tonnage is way down, so we don't have that issue in the cost. And so, that's why it's not affecting the rates at all, and hopefully, and we won't have that effect next year. Now, 10 years, five years down the road, if something happens, I don't know, back, last time we went out for, probably 2007, when we bid the whole landfill because our rates got kind of high? That could happen again, you know, but that's like 10, 15 years down the road.
2027, that contract.
Yeah, so, it all depends how you manage it, and I think we have learned from our past, and we want to keep that low as possible.
I would add that the message to the citizens is, the more you recycle, the more likely we'll have to go up on our rates, because it's diverting it out of the landfill and reducing the tipping fee cost. That's a true statement.
That's correct, you know, as Darryl, and you and Darryl has pointed out in his presentation, you saw recycling go up, so that's not in the landfill anymore either. So, I think with those components, that's how we're managing not affecting the rate itself.
You do have to keep in mind, though, that that does not directly correlate with ours, because we still have to drive by every home.
True, but there is a reduction.
There is a reduction, yes.
And just while we're on the topic, number one request I get, pick up recycling every week. Now, I'm not advocating that now, I know that would be very expensive, but I'm just saying, people always say that. I don't know about you guys.
It gets talked about on a somewhat regular basis.
I'm not advocating it, because I understand how much it would cost, so, maybe someday, but not now.
Well, that begs the question, can they get a second recycling can?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Or a third one?
They can call the office and order a recycling can for $5 a month, it's the exact same as what we do on the residential side, just a different color.
No more questions for Darryl? Wait, he can pass the witness to land now.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Darryl.
Very good.
Yep, yep.
We are here to talk about the Public Works FY 2015 budget. Before I get into the budget, though, I want to talk just a little bit about the department itself, what we do and how we do it, and what resources we use. Public Works is a department that is charged with maintaining, repairing, operating, constructing, and replacing most of the city's infrastructure, and also for producing, treating, and distributing our potable water supply to our citizens, and also for collecting and treating their wastewater discharges. We're a large department, we have 144 full-time equivalent positions, 19 of which are currently vacant. That's improving, it was 20, it's been 23 for a long time, so we're doing a little better there. We maintain 315 miles of roadway in appurtenances like curb and gutter and sidewalks, 191 miles of storm sewer, 368 miles of water pipe in appurtenances. And when I say appurtenances of water pipe, I'm talking about fire hydrants, gate valves, that sort of thing. 338 miles of sewer pipe, 23,600 water meters, all of which have recently replaced as a result of our automatic meter reading project. We operate one surface water treatment facility, 10 off-channel reservoirs, four water pumping stations, five elevated water towers, 10 water wells, two wastewater plants, and 15 lift stations. And we also have, as y'all know, just moving into the construction phase, of one new wastewater treatment facility and two new lift stations. So, there's a lot of infrastructure we're responsible for. We're a large department, but that's a lot of infrastructure. In order to repair and maintain and operate those facilities, we provide a wide variety of tasks. You know, our employees do everything from repair footholes and fix street failures, to cleaning drainage ditches, concrete and sidewalk repair, water and sewer line repairs, fire hydrant installations, new taps for water and sewer for new development, which right now, we're doing a lot of, we're seeing a lot of development. We operate a utility billing office to bill for and collect the revenue for water, sewer, and garbage service. We implement three EPA mandated discharge programs, one for stormwater, one that monitors industry, and one that monitors wastewater discharge from restaurants. Traffic signs and markings, replacing and installing those all over the city, repair and operate the traffic signals, and then we have an engineering division that designs new projects, does plan review for both public and private development, and also that does inspection on any project that is going to become city infrastructure. So, big department, lot of, lot of infrastructure to take care of, a wide variety of tasks, which means our workforce has to be very diverse, we have to have a real diverse set of skills. Our employees are everything from heavy machinery operators, concrete finishers, pipe fitters, dump truck drivers, cashiers, dispatchers, engineers, electricians, plant operators, the water plant operators, of course, are, have a chemical background, because they, that water treatment's done using chemical methodologies. Wastewaters have a microbiological background, because that's all microbiological activity. Maintenance and instrumentation techs, and labors and everything in between, so, very, very diverse set of skills in this department. Our department spans really two different funds. We're partly funded by the general fund, that would be for our streets, our traffic control and engineering division, and we're, of course, the utility side is funded by the water wastewater fund. So, we're gonna talk about those separately tonight, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk, you know, real high level, big picture of the budget as a whole, and just talk about the large items tonight that are in there. We'll talk about water wastewater first. For FY 2015, you'll see that we have a budget proposal that amounts to $26.4 million. Of that, over on the left there, you see the four, what I would call the core processes or core functions of that department. The 3.58 you see there, million dollars, is money that is set aside to fund the maintenance and repair and operation of the network of water pipes that are throughout the street. That also, of course, pays for installation of new services. Then, the network of sewer pipe, that 2.86 million that you see there under WST, that's what that is for. The PLT Fund Center, you see there, 3.745 million dollars, that is funding that is available for the production of water, the pumping of water, the operation and maintenance of all those, you know, the water, surface water plant, 10 water wells, the four pumping plants, five elevated towers. And then the WWP Fund Center, you see there, and 2.56 million dollars, that is for the operation and maintenance of the wastewater treatment plants. You'll see on the other side, on the right side, other is 1.44, that is money to fund the operation of the utility billing office, the industrial pretreatment and stormwater program, and also our water resources or environmental services that are performed. 2.7 million of that 26 is non-departmental, that is basically transfers to the general fund, based on 10% of anticipated revenues. And then nine point, right at 9.5 million dollars is debt service on the outstanding revenue bonds that we have. Together, that all makes up the 26.4 million dollar budget. When you compare that budget against our current budget, you'll see that this budget we're proposing is about 1.4 million dollars higher than our current budget. That is attributable to the recent increase in debt service associated with the Odom Street Wastewater Plant, the recent bonds that were sold. So, you can see, you know, if you took, if that weren't there, this budget would be really flat or a little bit less than the current budget. A big part always of the water wastewater fund budget is pipe replacement. We try to do, you know, a million dollars worth at least of pipe replacement every year. For FY 2015, we are proposing to do the second phase of North Heights, that is, would be Trinity Street, along with one block each of Depot, Cameron, East, Goldman, Jecker, Levi, and Lewis, that's shown there in green on your handouts. The blue Phase 1 is being done in FY 2014. That is estimated to cost 1.2 million dollars. In addition to that subdivision, that's pipe replacement, we have included $300,000 in the budget for emergency pipe replacement. This is money that is set aside and used for failures as they occur in the system, and we have typically been experiencing about $300,000 worth a year of emergency failures. We recently had one out on US 59, a manhole collapsed out there, a very deep manhole on a large diameter line, and so, when that happens, in order to get it fixed quick, we have to bring, usually bring in a contractor, and that's the money that we use to pay for that sort of thing.
That's on next, the next, the 17th budget.
We'll be bringing that, yes, on June 17th, we'll be bringing you a ratification of an emergency repair we just did on US 59, to a manhole there. And the other thing, the other part that we've included in the pipe replacement budget is $200,000 for contract services. This is something new that we have never included before, and it is money that we put in the budget to take care of some of this new development. We're seeing a big influx of new requests for new water and sewer services, at the same time that we are shorthanded on staff, and in order to avoid making those developers wait a prolonged period in order for us to get to some of these services, we put some money in the budget so that when we need to, we can hire a contractor to come, put in a service or a few services for us to help us catch up. We'll try to avoid that if possible, because obviously, the unit cost is much greater when we have to contract that out, but we believe that in these times that we're seeing right now, that's gonna be a best business practice for us in order to meet the needs.
Did you do some of that in our current budget year?
It is not included in the current budget year.
Did you, you didn't contract, use any contractors for any of those services?
I haven't yet, I haven't yet. We're getting to the point where I'm probably gonna have to, overall, I've got one area where I'm gonna have to.
They would have come through here, anyway, I guess.
Normally so, because.
I just didn't remember.
Yeah, I haven't had to yet.
Okay.
I've been considering it, though.
I understand.
So, a total pipe replacement budget in FY 2015 of 1.7. We compare that against FY 2014, it's a little less, we had right at $2 million in FY 14 budget, but we had the Ben Jordan Manhole Project in 14, and the DeLeon Street replacement, which were kind of out of the normal for us to do those, but it fit in that budget, it needed to be done, so, so that's where we stand with pipe replacement. Some of the other large items that are included in the water wastewater budget, of course, replacement vehicles are always a big part of that, because many of the vehicles that we use to work on water and sewer lines is big equipment, is dump trucks and backhoes and that sort of thing. We do have three backhoes in the, in the 2015 budget at $125,000 each. Those are backhoes that are on a five-year guaranteed buyback program, and their five years will expire in 2015, and so, we will need to take advantage of that and go ahead and replace those. We also have one forklift to replace that estimated at $62,200. Pumping and treatment equipment are some other large items. We've included in there a variable frequency drive for our river pump station. What that is, is a piece of equipment that connects to your pump and will allow you to speed up or slow down that pump to pump a desired flow rate. What we're seeing is, is we're in these drought conditions that we've been in for the past several years, in order to really make the most effective use of the water that we have available, the way our permit is structured, if we could slow down a pump, we could take that water as needed. In other words, when the river level's very low, we're limited to 10%, and right now, it's difficult to turn down a pump that much, so you're having to start and stop. If we have a variable frequency drive, we can slow that pump down and pump water when it's available. You'll see sludge collector rehab parts there, $50,000. That is the second set of those, those are, those are the big sludge rakes that are in the sedimentation basins at the surface water plant. You might remember seeing them, they're on big bicycle chains, big, long bicycle chains. Over time, they wear, the Teflon and everything wears, and we need to replace those parts. We did one in this year, there's six of them total, and so, we're trying to do one a year for the next several years, so we've included that. Dewandering boxes, this is in preparation for the closing of the Willow Street Plant. We are, right now, we are using the sludge drying beds at the Willow Street Plant for line cleaning debris. In other words, whenever we or a contractor cleans a sewer line, they take the debris there, put it in the sludge drying beds, and dewater it that way, and finally, then, the debris is picked up, once it's dewatered, is picked up and taken to the to the landfill. We're going to lose with that, that, that ability when we take Willow Street out of service. So in preparation for that, looking for an alternate method, we want to purchase these dewatering boxes, put them at the regional plant, we just put our line cleaning debris in there, de-water it into the regional plant, and then take the roll-off to the landfill and dispose of it that way. Demolition of an old headwork structure at the regional plant that is no longer in use, and it's just been sitting there, but now it's to the point where a lot of the galvanized roofing is coming off, especially in a high wind situation, we just, it's time to, time to take it down. There's some generator docking stations on, in there, which will, these are for the lift stations. Basically, it's a transfer switch and a plug at each of those that can be hardwired in at each of those lift stations, so that during a power outage, we can back a generator in there, plug it in, flip the switch, and be back up running very quickly, as opposed to having an electrician out there in the middle of the night, late, running wires and trying to hardwire a generator in and taking hours. This way, we can restore service very quickly.
Then.
Yes.
I'm sure with that, you've thought about the situation when the power's out, if it's a flood, if that area has water in it. You're talking about at the big plant?
I'm talking about at the lift stations throughout town.
Lift station, oh, okay.
They're, and they're spread all through, all over the city.
Right. And they're not, yeah, those aren't.
Most of those are not subject to.
Does that $32,000 take care of all 15?
All the ones that don't currently have them, some of them currently have them now.
Well, that's just the ability to plug in, right?
That's, that's basically what that is. All it is is a plug and, and a manual transfer switch.
Can I ask you else about that VFD on the river pump station?
Yes.
Pumps and volumes can handle the turn-down without falling off the pump curve?
They can to a certain extent. We will, we will, when we set the SCADA system up to, to control the VFD, we will set upper and lower limits on that to keep it from on the pump curve and keep it from going.
And that turn-down's going to be enough, I mean, it's going to be low enough?
It'll be low enough to where we can take much more advantage of the river flows than we currently can, yes, because those are large, they're large volume pumps, you know, 9,900 gallons per minute. So, you know, if we can turn it down to, you know, 2,000 gallons a minute, we can take, take advantage of a, a lot of pumping ability where we normally wouldn't have.
Lynn?
Yes?
The dewatering boxes, are those similar to what they have at, the gentleman that has the pumping, pumps grease traps, whatnot, that's out on 59, he has dewatering boxes, and I've seen them, I was very impressed. Are these the same kind, or?
You know, I'm not positive exactly what he has. I know my, some of my staff works very close with him on that system out there, but I personally do not know. Are they similar? Okay, Donald says yes, they're, they're very similar.
Where, where are they, where are you going to put those?
I'm going to put them at the regional plant, near the headwork structure, so that we put line debris, line cleaning debris in it, and it'll de-water right into the headworks, and the water will go through the treatment process then.
Are we budgeting for decommission of Willow in 2015?
That is, no, it is in the.
16? Okay.
It, it is in the contract that we just recently let with a contractor to build the Odom Street, the de, the decommissioning is also in that contract.
Probably 16, won't it, Lynn?
Probably be 16.
Yeah. Probably 16.
Early 16, though. Mid 16.
It was this $290,000 that I had asked about that was.
Alternately was picked up.
The alternate wasn't, yes, because we booked it, yeah, okay.
But can you tell us quickly what's going to happen with that decommissioning of Willow? Everything's going to be like leveled, or buried, or what?
Everything will be taken, yeah, everything will be taken below grade, in other words, anything that's sticking up above grade will be demolished and pushed in on itself, and then all that area will be backfilled and filled up with, with dirt. And it will be closed in accordance with TCEQ guidelines and requirements.
Save you a souvenir.
Well, I thought it'd be good for grazing or for maybe a future park, I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah.
Open space.
Yeah.
Leave it there.
Okay.
Will there be any need for remediation at the Willow Street site?
I'm sorry?
Will there be any need for remediation at the Willow Street site?
We do not believe so.
It's all above ground. The operation itself, I mean, the actual effluent and stuff, right?
Some of it's below grade, there, some of the tanks and stuff.
Well, it's contained.
And we will have to, we will take samples and everything and make, and make sure, but we do not believe at this time.
You hit it a minute ago, it will be closed in accordance with TCEQ regulations.
Absolutely.
All those.
Moving on, of course, maintenance activities, we always try to do $100,000 worth of sewer line cleaning, that is in here. And again, we are doing a, proposing a $60,000 gate valve and hydro maintenance project. The only other thing in here I think worthy of mention, I, I talked to y'all during CIP about our SCADA system, and at some point in the future, we're going to need to really upgrade. I think this is some of the first signs of that you're seeing, some of the replacement parts are obsolete, we can't get them, and so we're having to upgrade some of those components right now, and that's what you're seeing here. Just.
Do just a quick reminder of what the SCADA system does for us.
Okay. The SCADA system, SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. Basically, it's a computerized control system that from, from any computer terminal that's equipped that way around town, we can turn on and off pumps, speed up and slow down any chemical feed, open valves, close valves, basically control the surface water plant and Plant 3 and some of the treatment facilities. There's also a SCADA, a separate SCADA system at the regional wastewater plant, however, it is primarily a monitoring system only, it doesn't, not much control was ever done with it. So at some point, it needs to be upgraded too, to where we can do more control. But it basically allows us to control the plant from a central location. And that's all the big expenditures. I want to talk about revenues now, because this is the enterprise fund, so we are, you know, it's all funded with water sales and, and sewer charges for collecting and treating wastewater. For FY 2015, at our current rate, we're predicting revenues of 24.7 million dollars. You can see when you compare that against the budgeted expenditures of 26.4, that we're about 1.7 million dollars below, our revenues are below our expenditures. Now, of that 1.7, about 1.2 is one-time expenses, but still, you can see that reoccurring expenses are greater than reoccurring revenues as we predict them right now, by half a million dollars. So with that in mind, we, we think we're going to need to ask for a rate increase this year. We told you last year when we did our budget proposal, that, you know, we weren't asking for a rate increase last year, but we saw this, our O and M expenses have been creeping up over time, and we're to the point now where we need a rate increase for O and M, not the service debt, like many of them have been in the past, but, but for O and M. And we haven't had an O and M rate increase since 2009. And certainly, there's been a lot of inflation occur, or higher prices now than there was in 2009.
Another point, Lynn, too, though, the plant is getting older.
Absolutely.
And we're reaching that point, you know, we had the luxury several years, it was a new plant, so our maintenance cost wasn't as high. But with the age, that maintenance cost is going up.
That is correct.
What is that plant?
Came online in 2001, so 13 years now.
No. This is the water plant.
Water plant we're talking about?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
This is our current, this is our current water rate, it stands today. This, this rate was adopted in October of 2011. You can see on the left-hand side is the base rate, or the fixed portion of the rate. It varies depending on meter size, because we, we recognize that if you have a larger meter, you can flow much more water, and so our base rate increases in proportion to that. It includes, those base rates include the first 2,000 gallons of water consumption each month. Then on the right-hand side, where you see these blue boxes going up, that is the variable rate side of the rate, or what we call the consumption charge. And you can see there that the more water you use, the more per thousand gallons you pay, that's what's called an increasing block rate, and it's, it's there to encourage conservation. You can see that for the first, between 3,000 to 7,000 gallons, that's charged out at $1.67 per thousand. And then your next 8,000 to 18,000 is charged out at $1.83, and it just progresses on up until you get to greater than 100,000 gallons per month. So if we take that and look at the average residential water bill based on 10,000 gallons per month, you can see there that the average water bill at the current rate is $31.80 per month. The sewer rate is very similar, it's structured the exact same way. This, our current rate was adopted in April 2012. It too has a fixed rate that increases by meter size, and the variable side also has an increasing block rate. The average residential sewer bill, based on 10,000 gallons per month, is currently $38.07 per month.
But Lynn, on commercial, you have the variable of how your test comes out on your fee?
On some commercial, on, on those commercial establishments, like restaurants that have a potential to discharge high-strength waste to us, and certainly on industrial facilities, there is an industrial fact, surcharge factor that is applied, depending on the test, what the testing of that wastewater shows.
Have we ever put any thought into consideration of, of a grease trap ordinance for large apartment complexes, things of that nature?
We, we have talked about it, yes, sir. We, we've never, never adopted it, but we have talked about it.
Questions for you?
Yes.
Why the decrease in revenue over last year?
A lot of the revenue is based on weather patterns, and so, and, you know, predicting weather patterns. I think your, your, our water sales have actually gone up because of the.
So you're predicting 24,700, 24,702,000, right?
Yes.
And our budget last year was 25, 25 million?
No. That was what was predicted last year. Do you have your projections?
Okay, timeout. Let me clear something up first. Lynn, is it correct, the number you have up there in fiscal year 2015 of 24.7 does not include any type of new revenue in there?
That's right, this is current rate.
So that's not, the, the number that we're projecting for 2014 is 24.7 million, 24.7. Our budget is 24.732. What he's talking about there is strictly if there was no rate increase for 2015. Now, why the, if you take those out, it's a weather deal. We have, it's, it's all about weather. The past couple of years, we have higher weather, I mean, hotter season, and we started generating revenue higher in the early April, May, not lately. So I have to go with the inclination, I'm a weatherman somehow, sometimes, that next year, that we're going to have almost the same pattern we have right now in this current park. So that's mostly, now, in a few minutes, he's going to show you a different number that he's calling for, for the 2015. So this is not the projected number for 2014. He's just took whatever I, I, I had for 2014 and not include any increases, nothing like that. So I believe if you, if you finish that point, then you can see how the puzzle puts.
Right, it's very.
Because what I saw, go ahead.
What I'm looking at is the, the budget for 2014 on expenditures was 25 million.
Okay.
So I'm assuming we had a balanced budget.
We had a balanced budget last year. We had 24.7 million dollars revenue, we had 25.0 in expenses. We also had one-time expense, one-time revenue, expenses in there, so if you take those out, revenue exceeded expenses by, I would say, close to $400,000 to $500,000.
Right, it's recurring revenue and recurring expenses. We, we pull those one-times out.
To answer your question, we had a balanced budget last year.
So that's why I'm saying it looks like predicted revenues are going to go down, and our expenses are going up by 1.4 million dollars.
Well.
Which is primarily, primarily attributed to debt service, but then on this other slide, we're talking about one-time expenses and.
Okay. That, when I, when I looked at his slide first time, it was kind of confusing. That is 24, that number right there is fiscal year 2015, it's not what I'm projecting to end the year of 2014 at. Okay?
Right, it's going to be less than 20, what you're projecting for 2014.
24.65, okay? So he's taken, and that includes some increase in, in customer base. He's showing you that number, so if you take my 24.65 plus what I assumption from an increase in customer bases by 61, 62,000, comes up to that 24.7. In his later slide, I believe, he's going to show how that goes up to match your recurring expenses.
Absolutely.
I guess the point I'm trying to get at towards the end is, if we looked at that one-time expense number and the revenue bond interest, except for those two things, you wouldn't be needing to change your rate.
No recurring expenses, it would go up to 25.3 million dollars this year. If you take.
Do you have a slide you can go to to help explain this? I mean, I know.
Yeah, it's confusing.
I meant.
The way I look at it, you got 26.4 million in the budget for expenditures, of which 1.5 million's new debt service.
Right.
And you're saying another 1.175 million of one-time expenses.
And you're going to have a recurring expense approximately 25.23 million dollars. Well, I have revised some of the numbers, the ones I'm looking at now, but. Go back to that slide, please, sir.
This one, right?
Yeah, if you take, I think he's taking a 26.396, subtract off the 1.175, you come out to about 25.2, 25 something. That's the recurring expenses.
Well, then, you got also this increase in debt service. Right?
That, that's in there.
So if you're looking apples to apples from last year's budget to this year's budget, right? Or not? Do we still need a one-time expense out of there? I'm just trying to get to, do we need the rate increase or not?
I think he's going to show you that.
Is it only attributable to debt service? Or can some of these one-time expenditure requests be trimmed?
Getting ahead of it, maybe.
Well, I think we got to, just, excuse me, we're backing out the one-time expenses, we're trying to match reoccurring to reoccurring on that, on the rate increases. And so I, I'm not sure if you, when you go over to that slide that talks about budget development criteria, how you came up with your numbers, if that will help.
Okay.
Or it may be that before tomorrow at 1:00, we come up with a chart that shows reoccurring, projected and actual for 2014 compared to reoccurring for 2015 expenditure and revenue.
I have all, but it's more of a financial deal, and I, I didn't want to.
I understand, but I think, can't we take that and.
I can do that.
Bullet down to a small table for tomorrow and help clear that up?
Yeah.
And also, I need a little bit of background, I thought the wastewater treatment plant was already taken into account with current rates and that bond.
It is, it is, it is. This rate increase is not for the debt service, this rate increase is for O and M cost.
Okay, yeah, you're going to have to show it to me then, because I'm not getting those same numbers when I'm.
Okay.
I'm adding everything together.
I think that'd be helpful.
If we can't get through it today, maybe tomorrow.
Yeah, and we don't, you know, this is information today, so, and I think that table will help.
On your bar, on your bars, on the first one, the water rate?
Yes.
When you, you do the calculation for 10,000 gallons, that's current or that's projected?
That is current.
That's what, what it is?
That is current.
And, and those numbers, $1.67 on up, is current?
That is current.
So is the fixed?
That's correct. All of that is current. That's our current rate. I was just going to. I was just gonna, I don't want to dwell on rate comparison while we're talking about it. We're gonna come back to answer those questions tomorrow, right, with...
I think so. We'll do that chart tomorrow.
Just, I don't want to dwell on rate comparison with other cities because there's such a wide variety of different factors that play into that. You know, factors like how old is your city, how aggressively have you replaced infrastructure, where do you get your water, how much is that water costing you? Do you have electric utility that subsidizes your water utility? I mean, there's, there's a lot of things. But every year, it's, I think it's worth mentioning, every year TML, Texas Municipal League, comes out with a rate comparison in May, and they usually compare cities against similar-sized cities in Texas. This year, they compared the city of Victoria's water and sewer rates against these, this group of twelve here, Harlingen, Baytown, Farr, Flower Mound, Temple, Missouri City, North Richland Hills, Conroe, Rowlett, San Marcos, and Ulyss. And just to summarize there, you can see of that group, residential water, we were at the thirty-third percentile of that grouping, so two-thirds of those cities had higher residential water rates. Our rate was twenty-two percent lower than the average for that group. When you jumped up to commercial water, we were at the fortieth percentile, and our rate is seventeen and a half percent lower than the average for that group. Residential sewer, we're at the fifty-fourth percentile, and our rate's five percent lower than the average. And commercial sewer, we're at the sixty-fourth percentile. Our rate is twenty-five percent higher than the average. Here again, there's a lot of factors that play into that, but I wanted to mention that. It's, you know, it's a good tool to look and just make sure you're not way to one extreme or the other, at least.
What makes this higher in commercial?
We, I think it has to do with, we had a lot of, back in the, around the two thousand, we went through a series of rate increases to address an administrative order, and most of that hit the sewer fund. And that caused our, you know, our commercial rates to be a little higher because it's a, it's, we have an increasing block rate. So when you get up into commercials, you're at those higher tiers there. Not every city uses those increasing block rates. There are some cities that use a decreasing block rate and actually go down the more you use. This rate increase, what we're recommending is twenty-five cents be added to the base rate of a three-quarter meter and twenty-five percent, twenty-five cents per thousand gallons be added to each of the tiers, both on water and sewer side. Together, that will generate an estimated, a little over a million dollars, a million and ninety-three thousand dollars in a year. And the result is an increase of about, well, four dollars and twenty-five cents per month for the average residential user at that ten thousand gallon rate.
So you're saying to each one of these tiers that we're looking at, you're gonna add twenty-five cents to the base rate?
Twenty-five cent to the base rate on the left.
On the left.
Of the three-quarter meter, and the others will go up according to how much they're proportioned. And then twenty-five cents to each of those tiers on the right. So that dollar sixty-seven would go to...
A dollar ninety-two? And the two-seventy's gonna go to two...
Two ninety-five, yes. That's what we're, that's what we're proposing to you.
Twenty-five cents both on the water side and the sewer side, even across the board.
Even across the board. Yes, sir. In order to generate, you can look here, this next slide will kind of show you the, the impact that, that, that rate increase has on your overall budget. You know, before we showed a deficit, when you looked at recurring revenues versus recurring expenses, using a beginning fund balance of eight point eight-five million dollars, the projected revenues at the current rate, adding to that the revenues from the rate increase, subtracting from that the budget proposal, you get an ending fund balance estimated at eight point two-five million. And here again, you get recur, your reoccurring revenue now goes up to twenty-five point seven nine million, which is five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars higher than your recurring expenses. So instead of being a half a million dollars below your expenses, now you're a half a million dollars above your expenses. And here again, you know, with water and, water and sewer, it's very volatile depending on weather patterns, and so...
And what's that reoccur, what makes up reoccurring expenses?
Reoccurring expenses, O and M costs, that's, that's what it is.
What about debt service?
Debt service is in there.
And the point, I think, I think you missed it, Mr. Bongnai, on your revenue, you also have your M and O fee and debt. If you want to take out apples to apples, then take out the debt on the expense and take out the debt of the revenue. And then you have a clear picture, you still have the same scenario, because in that twenty-four point seven, we have adjusted that rate based on, over the years, M and O, and also the debt issues that we did as it generates revenue. So in that twenty-four point seven that we were talking about earlier includes two components. Includes revenue from M and O as a fee and a debt. So if you want to compare apples and apples, you would have to take out all the revenues associated to debt out of that twenty-four point seven, and it's gonna be, because sixty-seven, sixty-eight, I want to say sixty-nine percent of our base is strictly for debt. So if you take that number out, take all the debt out of the expense, you're gonna have a clear picture. And that can be done, but it's gonna still show you the picture if you throw everything together and just leave it there, and you still will have a deficit. At that point, that's what we're trying to point out while I go. So bottom line, if you don't do a rate increase here, you're looking at twenty-four point seven for M and O and debt collections. Compare that, say, go ahead and do the, the expenses he's talking about. Well, you take the twenty-six, yeah, take the twenty-six, take out the one-time expenses, we don't, we won't do them. You still got twenty-five point two million dollars in expensive or reoccurring, M and O only. You have a deficit over, uh, close to a million dollars. So that's, so we can go and do the exercise and take out all the revenue and all that's related to, to debt on the revenue side and take out the debt, you still can come out to the same conclusion, but a different higher number. That's all it is to it.
Lynn, talk, I'm sorry, talk about some, if you don't do the rate increase, talk about some of the maintenance that will not get done, because it, it's maintenance that doesn't get done.
Just one moment, though, on that, if I take out the increased debt service, right, with one point five million, and the one-time expenditures for this proposed budget, it's twenty-three point seven million dollars.
If you're gonna do the apple and apple, you gotta take out the whole nine million dollars, first of all. You take that out.
But it's already in the last year's.
No, no, sir. Well, yeah, but not that much. The revenue that was there last year, it was a lot of debt too as well, you recall.
Would you be...
We used to allow that money for one-time money last year. This year, when, when we came to you, our debt structure for the debt is fine, because we generate enough revenue from the base, just take care of the debt now, okay? And that's what we've been doing. So if you, to make it easy, you take that twenty-six point four that we're proposing right now, take out the whole nine million dollar debt out, forget it. Go back to the revenue, you got twenty-four point seven. Take all the revenue related to debt out. The same thing we're talking about, but you're gonna see, there's gonna be a huge deficit, no matter what. The contrary to that, all right, we won't, we cut back on expenses that we're proposing. And then resulted that, we'll cut back on, on some of the things we want to do then. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, and the only way to get those, that large a ticket, that much money out of the O and M budget is you're gonna take out sewer line cleaning, a hundred thousand dollars. You're gonna take out gate valve and fire hydrant maintenance, and you're gonna probably cut into some of your pipe replacement. I mean, that's the only way, that's, that's, there's, there's no other big-ticket items in there. It, it's, it's all gonna be maintenance that you pulling out.
And to wait easy, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Will you spend some time with me next week to...
I can do that tomorrow, Friday, Saturday, whenever you want to do it. Yeah.
Pull that apart, okay.
Yeah, yeah, because it, I don't want to be on the topic, but it simplistic is that you take the twenty-five point two million dollars we're showing as a proposed budget right now, subtracting nine million dollar debt that's shown right now. Go back to your revenue, subtract the nine million dollars out there too, because we generated nine million dollars to service the exact number right now. So those two components just go out in the picture. That's, that's what happens. So you're gonna have nine million dollars in this, with twenty-four million dollars, you got nine million dollars listed with twenty-six, minus your one-time expenses, and you still have a deficit comparison. That's the point. And I'd be happy to sit down, and, you know, I wish, I can share my Excel spreadsheet. I got a bunch of numbers, percentage and everything, like stuff you kind of like, but we can sit down and look at it. Sure.
I still think the table idea is good for everybody, so you can show that.
Tomorrow.
You know, how, do the table that shows the twenty-fourteen reoccurring, twenty-two ten.
Yeah, I can do that, but I'm also gonna do, just go ahead and show what it looks like. Okay, let's, let's pull out debt, complete, forget debt, because debt, we all said, it's gonna take care of itself. So that's irrelevant to this whole issue. The whole issue we're talking about now is M and O. So I'll, I'll create that table showing, you know, the logic of it. Then I give you another column showing, let's pull this out, and this is what it looks like now.
That sounds good. We got it.
All right.
Lynn, I have a question. So we have a negative half million right there, but the rate increase will give us close to one point one million.
This is a positive half million here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's positive. The rate increase.
I have a question, though.
Yeah, so that's a positive, so then do we need a twenty-five percent, a twenty-five cent rate increase?
Well...
If we're gonna balance it.
Like I said before, water sales and sewer charges are very volatile, and they're subject to weather pattern swings. Although, but many of our O and M cost has to happen regardless of how much water you sell. And so, yeah, you could generate exactly the, by doing half of that, theoretically, you could generate, to get to the exact dollar.
To, to answer your question, sir, the answer is yes. However, there's two components you gotta keep aware of, that there's a risk to that too. And especially, we also have some other issues that I think Lynn has not addressed, that we require, we're required by bond covenant, in other words, when we sell these bonds, that, you know, we would generate X level of revenues just to maintain, to have adequate enough revenue. If we can meet those needs, yeah, you, you probably can lower that. But the reason I don't agree with that is because you put yourself a huge, huge risk. And I'm not worried about, you know, data operation, but if you default, anytime those revenues drop because of the weather condition, you don't have a buffer in place, and you say, I want to set the revenue just exactly where it is right now, and somehow you have a weather change, and you're not producing those revenues, you have consequences on the, on the bond side. You can, you know, Lynn can address that in a minute, where we're gonna have to put money aside, never touch again, or we would come in default technically, because we not generating what we put, we told them we were gonna generate. So those, we create some buffers, and it just happened to five hundred thousand dollars end up being the excess. Could you go lower? The answer to your question, yes. But we have to study it, but there's a buffer that I would like to keep without affecting the, put yourself in a risk in a city that we kind of mess up on the bond side.
Perhaps the next slide might show some light on that.
All right.
Okay, this next slide talks about what Gil was talking about, that debt coverage ratio. There, basically, when we're building a budget, an enterprise fund budget, we worry about maintaining a minimum fund balance and maintaining minimum debt coverage ratios. And we build, we always build our budget around that. As far as minimum fund balance goes, we, we, we try to always keep three months of, enough money for three months of maintenance and operations and three months of debt service. You can see that these numbers are, are using the, the rate increase we're proposing here that three months of M and O and three months of debt service adds up to six point six million. We're gonna end up with a projected ending fund balance of eight point two-five, so we meet that, and we, we exceed that. That test we meet. For the debt coverage ratios, basically, we want to show that we're bringing in enough revenue to service our debt. So that's a calculation that takes revenues minus your M and O cost, and then divide that by your projected debt service. And we want to, basically, there's two tests that we use. One is a revenue test that uses the maximum debt service in any year of the amortization for that calculation. For that test, we always want to see a minimum of one point three-five debt coverage ratio. Using this budget with the rate increase, that yields a one point four seven, so we meet that test. The other test is a reserve fund. That's what Gil was talking about. By bond covenant, if we don't keep enough, if our debt coverage ratio isn't high enough, we could be required to set aside a reserve fund and fund that with, like, two million a year? Is that right?
Approximately two million dollars over the next five years, something like that, yeah.
And that money just sits there. Can't be, can't be used for anything, can't be touched, and so we try to avoid that. So by city policy, we try to keep a debt coverage ratio using the average debt service for any year in the amortization at greater than two. This yields a two point six four, so this meets all those tests.
Question?
Yes.
Every time, or at least last time when we did this part of the budget, we were given two or three options. Can we have two or three options instead of just the flat twenty-five cents? I think that's what he's asking.
Okay, sure.
We can, and it's just when we were putting the budget together, and it was my decision to move forward with this, because we know what kind of maintenance we need to be doing on our lines. And if we get behind in that maintenance, the consequences of, it's, it's similar to the streets. You know, we, we didn't take care of maintenance when we should have on the street, so we're trying not to get into that situation with our water and sewer lines. And that's, but absolutely, we can show you, if we back off this much, this is not what's getting done, but we're just postponing it, so we'll have to...
I understand, but we're hitting them so hard. I'm talking about the taxpayer. We're gonna hit them with an increase in their, you know, their property values, which, you know, everybody's upset about. And now we're gonna hit them with an increase in the rates of the water and the sewer. And, you know, it just goes on and on, and we're not the only entity that taxes them. That's what we have to think about, too.
And I appreciate that, and, and we're sensitive to that, but we're just trying to show you what it takes to maintain the system. So as elected officials, if you choose to lower that, you know what the consequences are of those choices. And so that's, we'll be glad to come back and...
Yeah, a couple of pennies difference. I think we'd had like three cents or five cents difference last time, just so that we can see what the, the differences are, because, you know, it does make an impact, you know, every penny.
Be glad to do that.
It's a very, very good idea. In addition, you know, it's not only educational for us, but for the, for the public as well, is, you know, they have a better understanding of what goes into making these type of decisions.
And I assume that...
Every time we neglect maintenance, it always seems to come back worse later. And that's my reluctance to back off on the maintenance, because we're behind so far now. It is what it is. By delaying it, you save some money. Now, that is correct. But I believe it doesn't save you money.
Well, I understand, but the thing is, you, you have to think about how you're impacting the people that provide us, you know, with this revenue.
How you're affecting next year's and the years after. And so sometimes things delayed only become worse. And that's my concern, that we would hurt them worse by not doing it than by doing it.
But that's also weather dependent.
Absolutely, there's, well, we can't predict...
I mean, that's, I mean, that's where hedging that, that's where...
I never was a good weather man.
It's dry, then the revenues are gonna increase.
Well, some of the choices here, you know, I would, I don't, it's not to focus just on the increase. There's two items. There's sewer line cleaning and gate valve and hydrant maintenance. We can all tell them, don't do it right now. There's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But that's rec, that's what they're recommending as professionals, so, you know, that's the way to, do you want to clean the sewer lines or not? That's really the question to me, and it costs money to do that. This guy here, standing here telling me, we need to do that in order to take care of the health of the system. So, now, we have several months before we make all this final decision. I'm just saying, think of it that way.
You know, not being an expert in, in those subjects, you know, it'd be nice, and I don't claim to be, you know, that's why I think the education, you know, to make an informed decision from this side of the dais, it's, it's helpful to, okay, say, this is exactly what this looks like, what purpose it serves, the consequences of holding off a year or so, you know, so that, that we can weigh the balance here. You know, the, the concern that the taxpayer has versus the immediacy of these needs. So we'll, we'll look forward to hearing from you.
I had one point, going back again to the water rates, I obviously had this, this question, and the sewer rates.
Okay.
So at between three and seven thousand gallons, you're at a dollar sixty-seven. The next jump, you're at a dollar eighty-three, right from eight to eighteen thousand.
Yes.
So there's roughly, what, about sixteen cents, right, increase? And then the next tier, thirty-two cents, the next tier, twenty-five, the next one fifteen, and the next one fifteen. I'm real, I've always been curious about how you arrived at those, those tier jumps and the methodology, and whether or not those, because all you're doing is adding a flat number to everything. You know, is that, is those, those gaps, those increments... You know, is that, is those, those gaps, those incremental increases need to be adjusted first, then you come in and add a flat fee, or a flat increase.
That's something we can look at.
I don't understand the methodology, both in the, that's the water, when you look at the sewer, you go from 222 to 227, 5 cents, 5 cents, 5 cents, then 15, and then 15. I don't understand that methodology.
Well, when it was originally built, those, the 15 cents for those very high users, and here again, that's primarily to encourage conservation for those very high users.
But, I mean, is, how long ago was that? And then, do we go and look at that and tweak it?
Tweak the incremental difference.
10 years ago, so it's before that.
What was it? Five years ago, 10?
No, no, before 10, it's probably, yeah.
Have we, so we haven't studied in 10 years, maybe?
We look at it every year.
Every year.
Okay.
Oh, the tearing deal, oh.
How, the structure itself?
Oh, yeah.
It's been, we haven't touched it since past over 10 years, 10 or 15 years.
I just feel interested in, no, understanding the methodology then, y'all look at it, does it reflect now, and if that needs any adjustment?
When I was involved in this whole deal, that the only reason that the structure was done that way, just as Mr. Short would say, it's just a conservation idea, that's all it was. And why that particular number, which is the number?
Most cities have a progressive rate such as that. How many 8-inch water meters do we have in this town?
Eights, we have zero right now. Tens, we have one.
Airport.
So...
Either one of you could do this, and I might, but you'll do a much better job. Either one of you could do this.
I don't know if it's just an exercise, but at least I wanted to throw out there for, for thought.
The base rate covers our debt, that makes sure we cover our debt.
Majority of the base rate covers our debt, I have that information.
Okay, and then the variable is what covers our operating and maintenance.
And a small portion of the base.
So, we know by that, what we're getting in with that base, we're gonna cover our debt.
That's right.
Mr. Short, I got a question, then, if the rate is supposed to increase to promote conservation, if we look at the water rate going up in the tiers, the other slide, so the first jump is, what, 16 cents? And the second jump is 32 cents? And then it lowers to 25, and then 15 and 15? Shouldn't those ones over through there to promote conservation, shouldn't they be higher in penalty, then?
That's something we probably need to look at, the actual structures. We haven't done that, we've, you know, when we've, we've needed to do a rate increase to generate more revenue, we've usually done it across the...
Hindsight is point, you know, we can sit, talk about, back then, when this first, we didn't have this in place years, years ago, we didn't, we had a completely different structure in line. And the way this came about is that, well, this is new. And do you, do you have that huge jump, or you just have more of a softening in it? That's all that was. You're correct, it should've been higher, to promote that in a higher level, yes, but when we first started this whole idea and this new structure layout, we weren't sure how receptive it was gonna be, first of all. And it's probably a good idea to start looking back and looking at the whole layout again, again.
Maybe look at some of the other municipalities and see if the different tiers jump in correspondence to ours, or maybe they use a little different formula?
We could do that, but keep in mind, different municipality has different cost of unit and producing, so that, that's, we can do that.
There may be some science involved, it might be more alchemy, but also, many businesses...
I think there's a lot, probably a lot of truth in that, Councilman Jalapaska.
Sometimes, that's what you find when you really dig through it, has less to do with science and more to do with alchemy. But, remember that many businesses that don't have to be very big before you start using 50, 60,000 gallons a month. And so, you're also impacting your small businesses, restaurants and whatnot.
But, my, my, though we have to build capacity for the biggest, for the total amount, and those that are consuming the most, you carry the burden?
Well, for instance, what are they gonna do, quit washing their pots and pans at a restaurant? They can't conserve, that's the nature of that business, and you would impact them as well.
How many 3/4s do you have? Do you know?
Who, weigh the bulk of them? Donald, you know?
18, 19?
It's by far the bulk of them.
Say, maybe 19?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
So, all the other categories are, 23/6 is the total, so maybe 4,000 is everything else?
Yeah, and there's, there's, there's not many 6s and not many 4s, I mean...
I've always, for years I've seen this, you've used the same, always wished you'd add one little column, put a number of.
Number, we could do that.
Just, you know, anyway.
That's easily done. Okay.
Page 10?
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're done with water wastewater and ready to move to the general fund, if y'all are. Till tomorrow. Yeah, till tomorrow. Streets Traffic Control and Engineering, of course, are funded by the general fund. For FY 2015, we've put together a budget proposal in the amount of $10.3 million across those three departments, three divisions. When you compare that against the FY 14 budget of 7.9, you'll see an increase there of almost $2.4 million. That is attributable to the street maintenance program that we've talked about, where we're gonna try to do $2 million a year in seal coats, and also, about a half a million of it is attributable to a change in street sweeping that we'll talk about as we get into this discussion here. Just as pipe replacement is a big part of the water wastewater budget, street rehabilitation is a big part of the street department budget. And we typically try to do about $2 million a year out of the, out of the street department budget. We choose those streets based on street inventory ratings, and also the condition of the utilities. And we reconstruct those typically using hot mix asphalt. What we're hoping to do now is set up a maintenance schedule where we would also do crack seal every two to three years, and seal coat every seven years. For FY 15, we're proposing to rebuild Anthony Road from Lone Tree to US 59, an estimated cost of 800, a little over $800,000.
Lynn, these are the projects we presented during the CIP.
Yes, there's nothing, nothing new there. That's correct. Also, Phase 1 of North Heights, which is the Bean Street, that we're doing the utilities in this year, we're proposing to come back and do the street, on, street work there next year, one, little over a million dollars.
Quick question on that one?
Yes.
Is that street reading correct?
67, I believe that's correct.
Well, it has a 6 on mine.
It's a 67.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, mine has a 6, is it, boy, that street, that you worked on, yeah. It's falling apart.
Well, 67's falling apart, too.
I know.
67's very low.
Okay, just, my paper said 6, I don't know.
It does, yeah.
So, if you look at those two projects, they add up to 1.84 million. When you compare that against FY 2014, it's just a little less, we had 2 million in 14, we're doing Hanselman Road and Seal Coat in Rital Ridge, Saddle Brook, and Woodway.
So, I'm sorry, Lynn, you have 300 and something miles of street, and that's what we're able to do.
Well, that's what we're able to do out of this budget, we're also doing some...
I understand.
Some bond projects.
This is street reconstruction?
Street reconstruction out of the general fund, street department budget. There's also some planned using bonds.
I know the North Heights, but Anthony Road, what does that all total, about a mile? Mile and a half?
It's, it's not too long a section, it's expensive.
Just thinking, yeah. Very good.
We have included the 2 million or 1.99 million in here for the seal coats, these are the same, same subdivisions that you were shown during CIP, and this is in addition to the budget, this is a big contributor to the 2.5 million dollar increase you're showing you this year.
This is the street maintenance program.
Street maintenance. The rest of that $500,000 is attributable to street sweeping. What we're proposing this year is to outsource our street sweeping. As y'all know, we've had a very difficult time and have not been very effective at all with our street sweeping, we've had a very difficult time keeping our sweepers operating for any, any ongoing time period. We have looked at other, what some other cities are doing, like Corpus Christi, they are outsourcing their street sweeping, it's been very effective for them. We've called in some contractors and talked to them, and they've given us this preliminary figure of $640,000. That's based on doing the state highways every two weeks, the rest of the thoroughfares on a monthly schedule, and residential on an eight-week schedule. That does include about 240,000 of that is debris disposal. We would, we have included that in the budget proposal. That 640 is being partially offset because we're proposing to reduce staff by three, because we won't be sweeping streets with our own staff anymore. We can give up three positions, and that would be, of course, done through attrition. I have 19 vacancies now, and so, you know, no one would lose their...
There's no body leaving on that, it's vacant.
Right.
Lynn, we've bought a number of street sweepers over the years, and I've always been amazed at high maintenance cost, short life of those types of equipment. But, I recall from past years, we've bought them, and they just...
Yes, we have.
Must be a rough, old darn vehicle to do that.
Yeah, you know, street sweepers today have a lot of, lot of different components going, you got high-pressure water spray, you got vacuum, you've got brushes, there's just a lot of stuff on them to break down, on these vacuum-type sweepers.
It's gotta be half the life cycle of almost any other vehicle we have.
I would think so. And we're, another thing we're doing by outsourcing, of course, we're not proposing to jump up and sell all our sweepers in year one, but we're at least avoiding having to replace those sweepers, and let's see how this goes, and hopefully, we can work ourselves. We'll still always have to have some sweepers, because there are, there will be emergency situations occur where we need to run by and pick up some water off the street, or pick up something that spilled, or there'll be a situation where something needs to be swept, and the contractor's not gonna pull off of wherever he's at and run across to take care of a little. So, we'll still have to do that kind of thing, but hopefully, we can avoid replacing sweepers, you know, over the next several, several years, and that's, that's a, another thing that will offset some of this cost as time goes.
Lynn, this, is the whole city in what timeframe? And how many times in the...
It is the whole city, basically, eight weeks, but it's actually more for the thoroughfares. Two weeks for state highways, a month for thoroughfares, two months for residential.
That's the frequency? But, okay, how many times roughly in the budget year is that, that they would hit those same streets, like the thoroughfares? Is that twice a year?
That's 12, 12 times a year.
12, okay, okay, got you. And that's what they're, they're gonna stick to that schedule?
That's what...
That's what we're getting for 640?
Well, we're gonna have to bid it, obviously.
I understand.
This is preliminary cost estimates based on our conversations.
Okay.
We will bid it, if it comes in substantially higher, we'll, we'll reduce the frequency and, you know, make it, make it go, and tweak it over time.
And I'm focusing on this number, because I know this is something we'll talk more about, but the thoroughfares, monthly, when's the last time we've done our thoroughfares? How long has it been? I know that...
We've done some of them more recent, you know, in, in response to requests and that sort of thing, I, I don't, I don't know, I can't answer that off the top of my head, but it's been very ineffective, there's no doubt about that.
So, when you bid this out, you know, you may bid a schedule like that, but you could also change the bid specs to less frequent cleaning and lower the total...
Oh, absolutely.
Something, okay, that's all I wanted to...
It'll be a unit, it'll be a unit price type bid, and we'll adjust the, the numbers up and down to make it fit.
Just a question, is this comparable to, at our best point, when the city was doing it, is this comparable?
I think this is much better than at our best...
Yeah, that's kind of the point.
No, this is a much better service. Much better service.
Roughly about 50,000 a month to have your street vacuumed.
Are there, like, large companies that just do this for municipalities?
I know, I've got pretty good-sized sand dunes in front of my place.
Yeah.
Lynn, what's the overall net effect to your budget on, by adding this program?
It's, it's roughly a half a million dollar adder, roughly.
Does that include putting aside for future equipment, for maintenance, for personnel, and then taking off personnel?
In year one, it depends on how long you wanna stretch that out over, in year one, there's no replacement sweeper, so you don't get the advantage of, of counting that against your net. All you get in year one, basically, is offset in personnel, and maybe some fuel, yeah, the fuel it would be running. Now, in year two or three, when you had a sweeper come up for replacement, then you could use that to offset that cost. So, the net in 2015 is about a $500,000 adder. If you stretch that out over time, that number will shrink.
What's the cost of a sweeper, Lynn?
I'm sorry?
What's the cost of a sweeper?
The ones we're running right now were 225,000, I believe.
At a five-year life.
If that.
Can we look at this over a five-year period?
Sure, sure.
I think...
I have that, I have that study available.
We looked at that when we were debating on whether to go privatize or keep it in-house.
I just don't remember the numbers right off the top of my head for each of those years, but I looked at it over five years.
You'll share it with us, then?
Sure.
Okay.
The only thing I would say, that the current equipment needs to be replaced.
Absolutely.
I mean, you can't, I mean, if you're gonna do that five years, you gotta have, count, well, you gotta replace this equipment this year, you can't, it's not working.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, you cannot take that out of the picture, you just gotta apples to apples comparison.
I think when we originally, we originally talked about that, if we didn't, if we had to replace equipment, then really, the net cost that first year was around a little over 100,000 with the equipment replacement, but you can't do that, that's not accurate for several years.
In other words, if, if you're gonna do this service, you need to count it for, account it for how, it needs to be accounted for, and how it's gonna be replaced over the next years. So, you need to start, well, I need these equipment now, and this is the cost, this is the fuel and everything else, that compared to your private sector dollars. So, you can't, so that, that equipment cost has to be thrown in the first year, then you're, then you're three-year, everything else, fuel and everything to be accounted for.
That's right, to get this level of service, that's right. And in that case, if you're replacing all three sweepers in one year, then, then it's actually a reduction.
We can have that for, when the budget, we start talking about the budget, right, like in August, we can have all that, hand it out, and then we can adjust and adapt with that time.
No matter how we look at it, this, this service costs more than what the city cost is, us doing it in-house, but we're not doing an effective job in-house.
Even if we had, even if we had the equipment, it still wouldn't, you know, because you said each one of those machines was about 250, so that's like 750 plus the 112 for the personnel.
Right, I'm sorry, but it's, it's more than just machine, what level of service do you want?
Yeah, that's it.
And that, that triggers your whole scheme itself. So, we can buy one or two, but you're not gonna get this service, or whoever service you wanna compare to. So, my point, if you really wanna do a comparison, you need to be truthful about your data, and take, okay, this is what the service is at this level versus this service from an outside at the same level. That's what I'm just, and we need to do that, we haven't done completely that.
Yeah, it does have the same.
But, city manager said it's a relative term. I mean, we could sit here and decide to do the state highways once a month, thoroughfares every two months, you know, and then say, "Okay, it's 320," I know, I'm just saying that. We'll, we can decide that.
It's, it's the level of service, and this is a much better service than our residents are receiving today. And even if we had all the equipment up and running with our vacancies, this is usually the first, one of the first programs we go to that we stop, because it's much more, we've got to do other things with the people, so that's, this is one of those programs that stops, so it, it's a matter of how much we want to provide our citizens. And I know consistently, the street sweeping has been, we get complaints on a lot of the job, so...
You haven't heard from me yet, I've been bugging her for a while.
I think we have to form a line, so, but it's a, it's a, you know, what we think would be a high-end service for our residents.
Absolutely. Okay, if we're ready to move on, the other large items in the, there's not a lot of other large items in there, striping, we're recommending to continue a striping program, just like we're doing in this current year, and fund it at that same $250,000 level. we're doing in this current year, and fund it at that same $250,000 level. Traffic control software, that is the software that communicates with all the traffic signals in, in town from a central location. It's what allows us to put in a program and ship that program basically to the controller. The, the program we have now, I don't remember exactly how many years old, but it's, it's old, it's, it is no longer being supported, it's obsolete, it's working today, but at some point, it's gonna go down, and we're gonna be in a bind when it does, we need to, we need to replace it. The cost to replace it is a little over $100,000. Storm sewer cleaning, we're doing that this year on the rent and, and some other locations. What we're proposing to do that again next year, and to do the Mayfair Terrace subdivision, a little over $200,000. And then finally, the drainage maintenance mowing, just like we're doing now, is in there at $312,000. And that's it for the general fund. Yes?
I didn't see anything, I noticed a lot of our outfalls are starting to silt up, particularly the one that crosses Navarro there, and, and others are doing this, and then there's also erosion problems in certain areas, because of, I, I didn't see anything addressing that either.
No, because we're proposing to do the storm sewer cleaning instead of that next year, Councilman. Some of those, you know, the small erosion things, we can get in there and fix with our own crews. Some of those bigger outfall projects are gonna be CIP projects, they're just, they're gonna be.
This last big rain didn't take care of the storm sewer cleaning?
I don't know if it cleaned them or filled them, but.
Oh, yeah, it got out right afterwards.
Yeah, live or no.
Is that all for Lynn?
Get off easy this time.
Okay, if, if you will give me a few more minutes, Jared can do development services, and we can wrap up the night, if everybody's okay. His is about 15 minutes.
Is that with or without questions?
I think, I bet that's with questions. What, don't you think, Jared, 15 minutes with questions?
Oh, I can make it five, if you want me to.
Any changes?
Here it is.
Read it.
The handouts in your notebook, right?
And you're not asking for any rate increases, are you?
Well, no, we're not talking about fees tonight, so.
No, we're not.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll dispense with our, our mission for sake of brevity tonight. Development Services Department is made up of 26 full-time employees in four different divisions, and at this point, all those positions are filled, which is good news for us. I have five employees in the Planning Services Division, which takes care of long-range, short-range planning, basically the planning commission, as well as administration of the CDBG and MPO grants. There are 10 employees in the Development, the Development Center, which is our permitting and inspections area, five in code enforcement, and four over in the GIS division. Wanted to just real quick, give you a look at our permit activity, and though we saw some, I gave you some of this information back in March when we were looking at the 2013 development report, but I've got four months of data in here for 2014, just to kind of give you a look at what's kind of going on. We are certainly on track at this point to exceed the 2013 numbers. Basically, construction activity continues at a, at a, at a rapid pace with a large number of projects, which you certainly are seeing, and you can add about another $40 million onto that total for the month of May. I don't have all those numbers for me, but we'll get all that out to you next, next week in the, in the May Development Services Development Report. But we are seeing an uptick in new houses, new construction of new houses. We had 16 for both the months of March and April, and we did 19 last month, so numbers are inching up a little bit, and we might begin to see a pattern here developing, which is good. So, back to the budget. Most of my department's budget is, is like what I guess we're calling a maintenance budget. Basically, it's flat year over year, with the exception of one major project, which I'll talk about in a minute. The GIS fund typically has, and it's professional services line on it, $10,000 to take care of some small contracts for software customization and programming, that is in there again this year. Happy to report that the Victoria Transit match will be flat this year, so recall, you gave them an increase of a little over $44,000 last year, so their local match this, this coming year would remain at $209,000.
Those routes that they were gonna add, are they added now? Where are they?
You know, I don't know, I, I don't know if I can answer that right now, but I will certainly find out the status of those. I, I know they're, they're obviously serving the new Walmart. I'm not sure if they've implemented that route that was gonna go by the Women's Crisis Center, Gulf Ben, of course, the Gulf Ben facility's not open yet, so.
And you've got the one on, it's in.
Lirling.
On Lirling, yeah, I'm sorry.
Not when they were talking about making an alternate route that would run at certain times of the, during the, during the, I guess, business hours, so let me, let me check on that for you.
Yeah, they haven't given us a report at the MPO lately. We should request that perhaps.
Definitely can do that as well. In code enforcement, basically, we propose to continue funding the equivalent of, of one code enforcement officer out of the CDBG program. We actually fund half of two officers, that way they're able to work in all areas of the city, and I'm not having to worry about a CDBG regulation about where they're working and what, and whatnot, but it's the equivalent of one officer. We would also propose funding, continue funding the demolition program at 60,000, which will remain flat. As y'all recall, on the, in the CDBG grant, that, that grant is helping pick up some of that cost at the tune of around $20,000 a year, which is saving the general fund. And then contract labor, that's the Wheatie Lot mowing, that, the Wheatie Lot portion of that account would remain the same for next year at $85,000. It is increasing by $25,000, but that's actually a neutral line item of moving the $25,000 that was previously in the Parks Department budget and moving that over to code enforcement. If y'all recall, back in December, we did a code amendment that moved that responsibility for tree limbs overhanging the roadway, we moved that responsibility from Parks over to code enforcement. So that's what that increase there is reflecting. And they are certainly, obviously with the rain, extremely busy, so we'll, we'll see where we end the summer with that $85,000. Over the previous fiscal year, with it being so dry, they did not spend all that, fortunately. As I mentioned earlier, we have one major project planned in the department budget, and that's developing a new comprehensive plan, so there is $175,000 proposed in the Planning Services Budget for professional services. The original comprehensive plan was adopted in November 2001 by City Council. We revised or updated that again, and that, those revisions were adopted by Council in November 2009. It is, it's time to get a new plan. While perhaps the vision of the existing plan is still valid, there's been so much that has changed in our community over the last 14 years, and many of the objectives have already been accomplished in that original plan. So it's time for our citizens to work on a new set of goals and objectives that are needed to reflect where our community currently is and where we want to be in the next 20 years. And so this funding would provide a consultant to assist staff in facilitating the plan. So it would be a hybrid approach to creating the plan, as the original plan was, where we would utilize city staff to try to do a lot of the data research and, and some of the creating and writing of the plan, but let that be supplemented with some outside expertise.
What's the budget on that?
That's proposed at $175,000, and I believe a turnkey plan that didn't utilize some staff resources would probably be north of $250,000 easily. And we would propose to, once the budget's adopted, to come back to Council and set up how that, how we're gonna formulate that plan, whether that's gonna be using a steering committee or something to that effect, a citizens committee, and get that, get all of that ironed out and folks elected and whatnot, with anticipation of starting that, a full kickoff of that plan by January 2015, in hopes of finishing it within 12 months. So here's a breakdown of, I told you I'd be quick. Here's a breakdown of our department budget by division. You can see the largest of that is certainly in the Development Service, the Development Center, with $776,000, and it's broken out by each of those divisions. And then a look at comparison over last year, the department budget was a little over 2.2 million for FY 2014, and 15, it'd be a little over 2.3 million for basically an increase of $135,000. That's on the general fund side. Obviously, most of that is the comprehensive plan. Last year, we had a number of technology replacements, struggling for work, computers basically being replaced last year, and I'm one of those departments that's getting lucky, and I have a reduction in my internal charges for IT.
You all said with the software, your budget this current year had some charges for the new software system.
Right, I think that actually is in his budget.
Oh, is it all in his budget? Okay.
Yeah, but the, the technology increases were associated with, with that and replacing laptops and whatnot, so. And then there's a look at the, what we're expecting, or what we will see for the federal grants, just a slight decrease in CDBG funding, and I'll be getting a memo to all of you very quickly, showing you a proposed budget for that CDBG funding, and of course, at your first meeting in July, we'll have a public hearing and present, formal presentation on, on that funding, and the MPO funding is, is gonna be constant from last year. So that's it in a nutshell.
And the comprehensive plan is considered one-time money, it's not reoccurring.
The, the revenues jaded by the permitting process, when everybody goes and gets a permit, they gotta pay the fees, associated fees, that just goes strictly into the general fund? It's not.
No, sir, we don't.
Offsetting this budget at all?
No, it goes to the general fund.
Goes in the general fund. We, the general fund departments do not run a revenue and expenditure account, it's purely expenditure, so.
And our revenues are less than, our revenues that we collect are less than that $776,000 there for that to run.
But how much are they? I forget.
I, I was trying to see if I could get my, no, sir, this, because we've had really positive.
Growth permits.
Growth permits, we're somewhere between 550, 600,000, I, I think, for this year. When we come back later this summer with the fee discussion, I'll have all of that for you.
Jared, the, the building permit activity, you have 1,799 total permits, through, exactly when is that?
That's through April 30th.
Wow, so you're at almost 70% of last year.
Yes, sir.
For the first four, five months?
Four, four months, and like I say, I don't have all of May's numbers, but we permitted two large apartment complexes, and 19 houses and whatnot, so we're, we've got $40 million of permit activity that we did just in the month of May.
Very nice, that translates into tax base two years from now, or whenever it all starts to get on, that's, that's very significant.
Is that a calendar year or fiscal?
That's a calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Any questions for Jared?
Well, it's, it's gonna be across the departments in the budget. We approved a bunch of money for software last year, and we're gonna have all these streamlined services that you could do on the web, and I just, I don't know if it needs to be an item for Council, future update on all that, because I haven't seen any changes on the websites at all, so.
Now, the website itself, we hope to transition over to the new website sometime in July, I think, is where we're trying to go, like, the software, the permitting software, y'all, you're in the process, has it been bid? Or is it being, is it?
We've done an RFP process, and I'll let Donald tell you exactly.
Okay, yeah, Donald's the team lead on the software.
Yeah, we've gone out for RFPs, and we've gotten some responses, and we've had site visits, and we're kind of to the point where we're, we're down to the final, we're trying to pick the ones we want. I think Development Services is, pick the one they like, and now Utility Billing, along with City Secretary, and Utility Billing's got a couple more issues we're trying to work through, make sure it's gonna be the best fit for us, and then we're probably be working on getting a final contract and getting it to y'all. So I'm, I'm hoping July, late July, we have something, so maybe early August, you ready? It's been a long process.
Permitting software, yes, sir.
Permitting, and then utilities, we're gonna look up your history and.
Yes, sir, that, yeah.
The usage, yeah.
It's been a long process, but we're getting to the end of it.
If it's software implementation and website, about double or triple the time, I'm sorry.
Well, and we're doing it all in-house.
Just do it right.
We're doing it all in-house with staff, we, we didn't hire somebody to do that process for us, and so it, it takes a little longer when these folks are taking time out to do that, so, but it saves money.
It, it does do that, yeah.
And along, along those lines, help us understand where we are with the AMR. You know, we're three months into it, six months, I forget.
We're further than that, we've had it, it went, it was finalized July of 2013, we were 100% live, so we're, we're using it, it's been, it's, it's been, it's been great. We're seeing a lot of, customer service has increased, we're able to work with the customer on leaks automatically, you know, we get a nightly report that we, every morning, we come in and it's there, and we can use it to make customer contact on anything, maybe a possible leak. Our staff time has decreased, we don't have to go out to do move-ins and move-outs, we can just look it up on the system, and we know what the final billing number should be, and we know what the, a new account, you know, what their consumption is, or what their reading should be when they start. It's, it's been a huge success in my, as far as I'm concerned.
The hope there is that we get an accurate reading that reflects what the customer needs to be paying.
Another key point, Donald, I know he knew about it, but one of the issues we had when we went through this process is make sure the estimates that they were telling us that will increase our revenue, where it was gonna actually come about, and we're pretty pleased with it, and I was pretty surprised, and I thought, okay. So we're achieving what we thought we were achieving in the, during this, before we came out of the study.
Yeah, you know, the leaks and all that, so. Okay, historically, our unaccounted-for water loss, which is basically any water that, you know, you can't attribute to going through a meter or being flushed through a hydrant, or it's just, it's basically leaks is what it is, underground leaks. Typically, we're looking at 12 to 13% historically. In 2013, just being on AMR system for six months, 100% of it for six months, that number dropped to 9.43%, so it was a significant difference in, in water loss, and, and looking at the data, I didn't see any other, any other major changes in, in our, our usage throughout the city, other than that, other than the, the new meters. That, I believe it's directly related to the new meters, so.
Excellent.
Right.
Accounting for it.
Yeah, accounting for the water.
And you'd like to be under 10 for that, ideally.
Single digits is really good.
So, yeah. Single digits.
Well, but you're, you're improving on the leaks too, which is, you hate to see a water leak. That's very expensive water going down.
And it costs the consumer on those water leaks, so when we can immediately identify and let them know, it, it helps, helps us and helps them, so, yeah. So any other questions for Donald, since we transitioned from Jared? He quickly sat down.
We could finish the whole book by 11, couldn't we?
Yeah.
No.
But anyway, so we'll start back tomorrow at 1 o'clock, and the library will start us off.
Thank you.
If you keep going, I'm just glad to go back to work anyway.